Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the March 19th, 2018 City Council Work Session. We have an abbreviated agenda tonight, but we have some important issues on it, so we'll begin right away. First up, Amanda. Anne, good afternoon.
Our first item tonight is Merritt Mill Townhouses, modifications to their annexation agreement, and then also their affordable housing capacity fee waiver. So what I'd like to do is run down all the modifications, one by one. Patrick Stewart from Penrose is here for any questions, and we can invite him up once we're done going through this. We came at a work session on November 6th, 2017, so this is a follow-up with additional information. So there are five items out of their annexation agreement that they're looking to change, and I'd like to run down those individually, and please feel free to jump in and stop me with any questions. The first one in the annexation agreement, the property zone R8A, and the agreement shows 6.5 units per acre. Their request for modification is to allow 6.9 units per acre, so it's a difference of either 72 units, which was proposed in the agreement, and 75 units, as proposed in their concept plan. So we don't consider that to be a large change, so we would recommend that approval.
What's the impact if that were not approved? If we failed to approve that, or declined to approve that?
Maybe that's a good question for Penrose.
Should we pull a chair up, too?
Yeah, if we're working for you. That'd be great.
Pull up a chair.
And again, my name is Patrick Stewart. I'm with Penrose, the lead developer and long-term property manager and current property owner. So to answer the question, part of it is that, and I kind of explained this in front of the Planning Commission last week, the reason that we had to request the modification is that originally, when we put the development concept together, we didn't have a full formal survey yet. We were working off of public data that had the site at, you know, a little less than 11 acres.
How are you doing today?
Oh, good.
We know each other well, or relatively well, through this process, and I must say that this company's been very responsive to questions, so forth and so on. They've come out, they've met with the community, they've done a good job with that. My concern is the reason for the request, but the impact if we decline to approve this request.
Understood. I was trying to get to that point. It's sort of, the background's a little bit, it sort of plays into it.
I understand, you know, you measured the tract, and you remeasured the tract. You found it wasn't quite as long as you thought, as large as you thought, so you just need this slight modification to meet your current.
Right.
What, again, what's the impact if we don't approve this?
So I guess to boil it down, when we applied for financing, when you submit the financing application for the housing tax credits, you have to submit schematic plans. There's always a little bit of uncertainty, a little bit of risk as to whether everything that you're proposing, you know, gets approved. At that point, we assumed we'd be able to do 75 units and receive the financing commitment based on that. If we then had to say, you know, we're only able to do 72 units, there's a risk that we could lose the allocation of housing tax credits, because there's certain, there's just a number of sort of threshold and scoring requirements that relate to the number of units in a project. So that would be the chief thing, is that financing commitments are in place based on kind of the scale, size, the number of units within the project.
Did that answer your question?
It answered my question as to how it would impact Penrose and their process, and them having to redo paperwork in order to make sure they're currently scoring. I guess my next concern is how does it impact the city of Salisbury and the residents that reside there?
So for us, that three additional units is not a large impact in that area, so we could, you know, certainly, if it's financially feasible and they can move forward with 72, that's something they would need to answer, but as far as we're concerned, from the water, sewer, roads perspective, those three additional units didn't change anything.
Or, and it did not change the traffic study?
Mr. Tillman, maybe you could tell me what the outcome will be if this body decided not to approve this.
Is it pressing, if we don't do it? I think that's what my lawyer, I mean, my council friend has.
Well, I mean, because this has come in front of us, what we're being told is, well, the land didn't measure quite the way we thought it did. City doesn't think that it's a major impact. Fine, let's say we did do the vote, and then it came down on the negative side. I guess I'm trying to discern what is the outcome.
I mean, well, from an economic point of view, it sounds like that they theoretically could lose their funding with the state. But other than that, I don't think it's a big deal. I'm guessing that a couple more units will bring in a little more tax money than you otherwise would have gotten, but...
Mr. President, to put it in context, we've got scheduled for this year a rezoning, a comprehensive rezoning that we're hoping to fund, and I see the city planner smiling, hoping to fund, and that's something that's supposed to happen every, you know, what, 10 years approximately. It is unlikely that this area would continue to have this low a density at that area. 6.5 units per acre, even 6.9 is low density. So, you know, chances are, you know, within a year, by right, they could put a lot more on that property. So just to put it in context, you know, if you were to say do nothing, and that were to be redeveloped, a new development were to come in, or to deny the change, if it weren't funded, theoretically, I'm not sure, you know, what the likelihood of that is, and a new developer were to come in, they could, by right, put in even more density in that area, which could, you know, which could have a material impact on things like traffic and roads, and water and sewer, and stuff like that. You know, again, that's all theoretically.
So, to add to that perspective, the current zoning, underlying zoning, is 10 units per acre, and then when the previous property owners annexed in and they negotiated the annexation agreement, the council negotiated that down to the 6.5 acres per unit. So I guess one other, just to reinforce what the mayor was saying, that if this, it would have had a higher density if it had not been annexed, I mean, if it did not have this annexation agreement, by right.
When was this annexed?
2014.
Does the number of affordable housing units go up with this? Or is it a rate, market rate, or what is that? The three extra?
Well, it wouldn't, it's, they're kind of all part and parcel of the same thing. I mean...
Well, except that there's a waiver that is by unit, isn't there?
For, oh, for the capacity fee?
Right.
Oh, I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question. So our, I mean, the request for the capacity fee waiver is for, specifically for each affordable unit, actually? So that, so that eight, market rate units, what we assume would pay the capacity fee waiver?
So these are market rate units, the extra ones?
Oh, the extra three? I mean, we haven't, I don't, I don't really have a way to answer that question, I don't think. The three units would be, from a zoning standpoint, I mean, they'd be, there's no real way to split them out, yeah.
My understanding is a ratio. Is that how that was discerned?
My only point was that...
So whatever the percentages of the ones that are already there, it'll be a percentage of that three, right? April and I'll live in the...
Right.
First, we'll be in Hardee's district now.
Of the 75 units, 67 are affordable housing and eight are market rate, just so you have that ratio.
And 12 are disabled.
Okay, so the next point, there's four more items that they're seeking an amendment to. The next four items are all under Section 8 of the agreement, under the development considerations. The first one is Section 8B, which was modifying the proposed concept plan. So this did receive a favorable recommendation from planning and zoning. It does cluster the units together and provides more open space, so again, this is a favorable change. The next item is Item 8E. In the annexation agreement, there is an affordable housing contribution associated with this project. They are, Penrose is seeking to have that waived. The agreement stipulated that there should be a $2,000 contribution per unit to affordable housing, so the waiver request equates to $134,000. This is not the capacity fee waiver. We'll get to that.
If I may, just for clarity's sake, the Section 8 we're referring to is incidental. This has nothing to do with Section 8, the federal program that provides stipends. I understand that. I'm saying it for clarity's sake, for people that are listening, before people start going out and saying, "Oh..."
We have Section 8.
This is just, that's incidental.
Yes.
It's a good sign, clarification, right?
Yes, it's totally, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. Yes, it is.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, indeed.
I just want to make clear to people.
Man, we go back to starting, and Hardee's lawyering is confusing.
It just happens to be in Section 8 of the agreement. It has nothing to do with Section 8.
That's what lawyers do, you try to clarify, and...
And you end up with 15.
How you get about an hour there, right there, Mr. Tillman?
So it's just incidental, and then, I wonder if you can inform me, to what extent are we obligated as a body to provide these discounts, or whatever we call it?
You're not obligated. This is, this is your decision. This is presented to you. There is an agreement from 2014, and essentially, anyone who develops has to either meet the agreement or get counsel to waive the requirement, so you have no obligation to do this. It's at your discretion. The next item is Item 8G. The agreement had asked that this development be to lead building standards, and what Penrose is asking is to meet the National Green Building Standards instead. And finally, Item 8I would allow Penrose Management Company to perform in the same role as the Homeowners Association, the HOA. So in addition to those five things, they're also seeking the capacity fee waiver for being in affordable housing for the 67 affordable housing units. At our current capacity fee rate of $3,533 per EDU, that waiver equates to $236,711 for capacity fees. That's separate from the annexation agreement. It would be separate legislation, but we wanted to bring the full ask to you at this Patrick, is there anything you wanted to add on any of the items?
I have a couple of questions before we go through there. I think somebody else, some other members might have it as well. I had, I struggled with the lead versus the non-lead. I've learned more than I ever wanted to know about the difference between the two. I thank you for forwarding information to me, and I did some other investigation on the, on the internet, which obviously is correct. He said sarcastically. And there is, to me, as a business guy, it's dollars and cents. It's much, it's more, it's more dollar-intensive, the leads program than the other one.
NGS, more user-friendly.
Right, right. But I, I'm comfortable with the fact that it's close enough. Any other questions relative to any of the items we talked about so far?
Can I just ask if I'm right? Because Hardee is confusing. There's a request to waive the capacity fees. There's a request to waive the contribution to affordable housing fees. We're in the wrong business, might I just add. And if I'm correct, you'll be getting state funding for affordable housing, or you'll get credits from the state for creating affordable housing?
I guess to elaborate on that a little bit, it's the, it's the low-income housing tax credit program, so that, so we don't, I mean, yeah, it's a source of funds that, you know, so investors buy the tax credits, that becomes a source of equity into the project.
I just, I know, well, we've had this conversation before about the state saying, "You're not going to deny this because..."
This is, this is it.
Because this is it. But I am worried that A, A, there's no significant improvements to the area around it, even for traffic and roads. There's nothing on here that tells us how many schools will be impacted by the number of people who are there, yet we have a request to waive the capacity fee, waive the contribution to affordable housing, which seems odd, because that's what's actually you're making, so... And then the state's going to give somebody credits. Again, I say to you, and you're not going to sell these, these are all going to be rentals, so you'll act as homeowners association, not like next door, correct?
We'll have, yes, our management company will manage the property.
And again, I would just say to you all, as I have said on every one of these that has come before us, if we do not sit down with the state and say to them, "We understand your want for affordable housing. We know that we need it in Salisbury," but it is not addressing the deficit that we've put ourselves into every time one of these comes. It does not address the infrastructure problems in that area, and simply because it is affordable housing, they are basically looking down from an apple saying, "You're going to do it," is basically what's happening. It's not their fault. I think this is a little much. I think, I think this is, this is a really incredibly sweet deal, and again, I say to you, when we're all off council, I think we should get together and find some traps of land or somewhere in the Beltway, and...
Except we wouldn't be able to do this.
Well, by the time I retire, I'll qualify, so I'm, it'll be fine with me, so...
Well, this is the last one, anything outside of the, for now.
I know, but you're, you know what, they were, I've been hearing that for, what is it, 2018, for at least 12 years.
This is the, this is the first time the state, I mean, that's happened, because the state lost a lawsuit, a major lawsuit, but if I can...
I'm not saying that they shouldn't be allowed to, and I'm not saying that they're not playing within the rules here, but I'm also saying that it comes to a point that those of us who are ultimately paying, because taxpayers in the city will pay, there's so many memories of the first news, the people who've sat in this chair in the last few decades saying the exact same things. Wow, déjà vu. That at some point, we're going to be on the hook when there's an accident out there, because there's no way to get it out of the grocery store. There's no way to get in and off of Merritt Mill without demanding that nobody will want a light, or another light, or another lane, or a turn lane, or a crossing guard. And I just, I don't know if there's anything we can do about all of these, but denying them the capacity fee waiver, when we've given it to everybody else, would seem silly. But again, we do it because we want to say we're good for business, and we do it because we have to say we're for affordable housing. But nothing out there has changed for anyone who lives out there, yet we're going to build 75 units, which you're going to have between one and three or four, or people in them. And that's how many car trips a day. My frustration is that this goes, and Amanda will back this up, is that this goes to the Planning Commission before it comes to us, and we are in a tenable situation when that group says, "Oh, yeah, fine," because in my opinion, they'll say fine anyway.
No, I have to take, I have to take exception.
It's gotten better, since Jack got on there, I will admit it to you.
Wait a minute, I was on there before that.
And Mr. Spees, who's listening at home...
All the last three who represented us.
He just shot you down, Jake.
But before that.
But before that, when the other person who talked like that sat in this seat.
But I think, in all due respect, when the Planning Commission looks at it, we debate, well, Mr. Rudisil was at the last Planning Commission meeting, and we've had many discussions about this project. But the reason that I voted yes is because ultimately, we have the final say. We do have the final say, and if we want to change something, we can change something. But I'm struggling with the same thing. You've got a mandate over here that says, "This is it." We have a need over here, which we have to fill, and then you've got what we've committed to, not just to them, but in the past. What are we going to do now, when the need has not gone away? If anything, it's gotten worse. We've seen what can be done positively, because I deliver meals on wheels over on Booth Street, and you compare Booth Street to any number of affordable housing in other locations, and I think it shows what can be done.
Do you think that this one's harder because Booth is, the way it is situated there, there's not a whole lot around that it has to be, you know, it's one road to the highway and one road the other way. This is, this is little houses that were in the county in the 1600s, you know, right around, it's 1960s, sorry. And when we talk about sidewalks and we talk about bike lanes, none of this area is equipped at all for any of this. We go around the corner and you have nothing, you have a little drop-off sidewalk, and then you get a sidewalk where the, where health, health south is, and then you don't get it. And then as, as, as Hardee, so, we said a little while ago, you know, people are using the back of the grocery store.
And that's going to be a major concern, and I'm sure there's constituents here who are going to discuss that.
Oh, yeah.
And I guess, you know, where it goes for me is, how much of this discount do we have to approve, and then how do we begin to know how this money's going to be spent by the city? Because we're going to have a sidewalk that leads to no place, and it's going to lead all these young people to the back of a grocery, a shopping center.
A bar area.
I think, I think the, I think that the, it's the plan, anyway, to contact the shopping center?
Yes, I'm having trouble locating someone to contact, but working on that.
To try to get a continuous sidewalk.
I mean, right now, what they have is pallets and, you know, makeshift stuff through the mud, but clearly, there's a desire line, and people are going through the adjacent property. Now, one of the major negotiating points with the annexation agreement was to provide that connection to the shopping center, and from my understanding, talking to the person who drafted the annexation agreement, there was that, and there was also that potential connection to the adjacent property that's not developed. Doesn't have to be built, but it has to be shown as a potential future connection if, in fact, that other property does get developed. And those are two major negotiating points.
Let me ask a question. We're investing 370-thousand dollars in this project, right? I mean, bottom line. Once you guys finish the sidewalk...
Which sidewalk?
All the way to...
On Tillman Lane.
On Tillman Lane.
So we do, we are completing sidewalks directly in front of the property.
Yeah, but right now, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, that one, right? The one by the, by the...
It ends, and...
It ends at the...
And then there's an abandoned home where it drops off.
So, doesn't change my question. How about you guys, with the, we've made a commitment of 370-some thousand dollars.
It's a long sidewalk.
Well, I...
No, I mean, just for 370-thousand dollars, that's a long sidewalk.
I'm not looking for...
I understand that.
I'm just saying, would that be something you would consider?
I'd say we could look into it. It's not something that I'd be able to commit to right now, I'm just trying to, I'm just being frank to, you know, answer your question.
Because then that would, that would solve a couple of issues that we've talked about every meeting I've been to. Every Planning Commission meeting, these meetings, right?
I was just going to say, without knowing the exact cost, I think, I think it would be very difficult for this project's budget to include that.
Well, I'm asking the question, so I would appreciate just, if it's too much, and you calculate, I'd like to know, actually, what it is. So we know what is approximate square, but we can calculate that.
So we're really talking everything on Merritt Mill and Tillman Road, any gaps between this property and the shopping center? Sure, we could calculate that.
And we only ask those questions because other municipalities get fire apartments made and schools built when stuff comes in. We historically don't ask that, and across this nation, really great companies that go and build things, much bigger developments, among you, build firehouses and schools outside Frederick. Salisbury doesn't ask that, so sidewalk here or there is pretty good.
We've just, we've just asked that of, plus a cross, a crossing at Aldi?
Yes.
We asked, you know...
Yep, all the way over there. And that's a hard, that's a hard intersection, too, and that's why we did it, yeah.
So I don't, I don't think there's a, not saying that if I don't, we're not going to do this. I'm not saying that. But I think that with the amount of money that we're putting up, I would, I would recommend that we just investigate it.
Sure.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I, I just wanted to make a minor note, which is that, another thing to consider is the project itself would be still contributing over, by my math, over $380,000 to the city, by virtue of the fees that we're not requesting waivers from, that are under the annexation agreement, and that excludes, you know, things like building permits. We're not requesting any relief from property taxes, so the project would pay full property taxes.
I understand.
Do you, is your assumption in other projects, you opened this box, so I'm going to go, I'm going to go through it.
Fair enough.
Is it your assumption that in other, in other properties that you have built, do you ask for those things?
So, I'm just, I'm trying to think about, it obviously varies by jurisdiction. Baltimore City, for instance, doesn't charge any impact fees. Some jurisdictions charge very, very high impact fees, and there's, you know, there's a limit to which you can, you can seek relief from those. In this case, the reason we're asking for a relief is because it seems like it's something that the city is trying to do to facilitate the creation of affordable housing, and that's why our request is really tailored and, you know, relates specifically to those two fees. One is the capacity fee that relates to production of affordable housing. The other one is for, to facilitate, you know, creation of affordable housing. The project is doing that, and so it felt like an appropriate request.
How did you, you and your county fees, did you ask for...
There aren't any...
There aren't any?
Well, one stop, now, everything comes to us.
Everything comes to you, but do you have to...
They don't pay anything to county. Not anymore. We fixed that.
Well, that doesn't help. The teachers who have 36 kids in a class, at Beaver Run or at...
No, the property taxes are supposed to do that, but... That's a tax differential discussion. Should we have that one?
I don't want you people picking on you, because we go through this every once in a while, every couple of properties we get, and if you're in that odd, donut place where it's infill construction because it's inside the Beltway, but there's so much on, so many different things going on there, whereas if it had just been zoned what it was supposed to be zoned, instead of everybody trying to get their piece of the pie 50 years ago, you would have all that stuff there, but that's another discussion, Mr. President.
No, I, first, no, we've got to take things in order. That's the second battle. The first battle is, I want to get, we've got to get these kids into a livable environment where they can...
Right, right. And Baltimore City doesn't charge you this because they have neighborhood schools. We have children in this county who've got to get on buses at a little after 6:00 in the morning to get places, and that's to schools that are very close to the city, you know, to the city lobby, to the city limits.
Right, no, I'm just pointing comparison, I'm just trying to think from my own experience.
Mr. Mayor, you have a question?
Part of that, what Jim just said, what Councilman Irtin just said, is because we build low-density sprawl.
Right.
That's what we do. Now, this development is not. This development is slightly higher density, is, you know, medium...
Semi-low?
Semi-low. It's better than the way we used to build things, and better than the way we normally build things. But it goes back to what, the point that Councilman Irtin was making earlier, because he is a, in a former life or a future life, he's an urban designer. He wants to be. Yes, you do. You want to be a city planner, I can tell. You love this stuff.
You live in outerwear, you're a foreman of the development.
You love this stuff. But the connectivity issues, the walkability issues, I mean, these are the issues that come from the way that we have built, especially, you know, the peripheral parts of our city. And I say "we," but frankly, it's the way they were built before they were annexed into the city, and we can fix a lot of these things through annexation process, and it sounds like we're getting there on this one. Just, just two other thoughts. One, with respect to the affordable housing capacity waiver, when we have asked developers, and we make all other developers who don't build affordable housing pay into that when they build residential, the reason why is, we're essentially building up a fund to support affordable housing. That's, if you read the... That, that's, if you read the legislation, that's the intent, that was the intent. Now, we don't build or develop that housing ourselves, but in theory at least, when we, it, if and when we waive that fee for a developer of affordable housing, in theory, we're, we're paying ourselves back. We're subsidizing. What we're not getting from them, other developers have paid into who are building residential development at a market rate in the city. The second thing is the EDUs. You know, I don't know when that started, but I think the intent there with affordable housing is to, and why we have always waived EDU capacity fees for affordable housing developers. I think it's just a way that the city has worked to help create affordable housing, help to make it happen.
Started before the state said you go, you're.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know when it started, honestly, that's before my time.
Started, uh, February twenty eighth, two thousand and five.
There you go, there you go.
I knew Amanda would know.
Still in college, back in those days.
Okay.
Can I make one, one more? Just, just point of information, so the project is actually paying to construct public water and sewer along the, the frontage of our property, Merritt Mill? So that, you know, hopefully that sort of goes to alleviate the capacity issues to some extent, but.
One other thing, I, I don't know if the thirty dollar linear foot is a relevant figure when it comes to construction of sidewalks. Sort of, it's probably leaving out.
Depends on the contractor problem.
Yeah, depends on the contractor, it's probably leaving out intersections in the, but if, if you're to use that number, it's like twenty one thousand. Just putting that out there.
I think that's it, personally, from a business point of view, I think that's a reasonable ask. Anyway, any other questions relative to the discussion?
So you got me on.
I got you.
Do you want us to go to the fore and see how we feel about which one, or do you wanna do that? Or is that too micro?
That's too micro.
Okay.
Did you have more, you were still?
No, that's, that's.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
But I'll tell you where, where we go from here, so.
Yeah.
We, we need your feedback. We would have to, if we're moving forward with any of it, any portion or all, we would schedule a public hearing at a city council meeting for the annexation agreement. Uh, the capacity fee waiver is by resolution, so that also would be legislative, but a separate track. Planning Commission will not approve the final site plan until they know how city council is acting, so they know whether or not any of these items are, are being approved. So, they've received preliminary approval from Planning Commission. The hope is to go back in April, but really that, we would go back to Planning Commission whenever we know how the city council's moving forward.
Which would give us time to, to hit this at another work session to get the response about the twenty one, whatever that number is.
Right, the sidewalks.
The sidewalks. And then, I mean, let me just, for my own benefit, check this to see if, is there a consensus based on the discussions that we had? That we could move this forward with or without? Let's not say with or without, that we can move it forward on the other issues other than the sidewalk? Or no? We still have a concern about the fees. If we pay, if we went, let's, let's, I'll do a poll, let's, let's do that if we can. How many people could support the changes that we're, that are there? With the twenty one thou- yeah, all of them.
He's gonna make you do a micro chat.
I, I, I have a feeling we're going that way, but.
I mean, I'm okay with the, the green building standard, which is C. I'm okay with the, um. You know, the, the dollars and cents, I have some concerns about unless we know, I can't, B, I can't commit on right now. I mean, if you asked me right now, I would say no.
That's the one thirty four?
Yeah.
Okay. No.
Because there's the part of, I mean, there's still some other, you know, like the discussion we've had with connect, connectivity and, you know, you know, there's gonna be foot traffic and bike traffic to food line and up and down that road. So I want, I wanna know some answers on that piece.
Yeah, I, I do too.
Uh, if, if, well, what can be done on that?
I just wanna remind you that we have already said we were okay with the one thirty four upfront.
Which one's that, Jack, that's the waiver for?
The waiver, yeah, yeah.
Well, I could be for that and not for capacity because we did the capacity fee drop legislation when we were trying to kickstart a brand-new homeowner occupied. And that yielded seventeen, eighteen, twenty units so far right up the road.
And a bunch more coming.
And I will just say, I'm glad that they're coming, but again, I, it doesn't. To me, the state ta- this, the, the credit that they're gonna get from the state is, is a, a, what do you call that? I don't know, redoubting, what do you call that? Not redoubted, come on, you know the word. It's, we're, they're getting credits from the state and we're also giving them credits as well, which to me are for the same thing. And that seems to me a little bit like double dipping, but I could be for that one if we don't do the capacity fee as well.
Okay, now we're in micro, so let's go back.
And if this property were smack dab in the middle, if you go look at where Moss Hill Townhouses is, which are, which are now section eight, they weren't, I don't think they were originally built as section eight all the way back in the day. But if you look there, the area between Moss Hill Townhouses, between the, the last electrical box at the bus stop, the railroad tracks, and, and where you come around to the school again, not, not a single sidewalk. You know, we, we were in such need of, of better quality places for people to live, we gave a lay. And I, I'm worried that without the connectivity issues that Councilman Bodo was talking about, that we're gonna end up with a, and it's a word that my mother would use, but I'm not allowed to use here in public, in terms of people getting in and out of the grocery store, people getting out back onto Old Ocean City Road. People deciding to take the right-hand turn at the end of Tillman and then go through the little street that comes up to the unitarian universal churches. I, I only say this because I drive it every single day on the way to Willards and I try and stop for coffee in the morning if I have not dawdled. And it's impossible to get in and out of that shopping center. It's impossible to get back out to Old Ocean City Road to get to Willards without doing something that I shouldn't be doing, which is driving through a residential, residential area. And, and therein lies the calls that I think we're gonna get is now on that little street, what's the street, it's right around the corner.
Jerome, is it Jerome?
Jerome.
Saying now we gotta send you back to planning school.
Well, I just, I don't, I, I'm, I don't want these people to feel like, oh, man, City of Salisbury decided to. But these are the issues we face in a home-rule county-state where we cannot annex, you come in. And if there's no reason to deny you, we have to deny you. But that doesn't mean that the property beside you is the county with ho- wholly different, completely different set of standards and expectations. But as we have said to people who've sat in your seats before, it is not you all that are going to get the call when you leave about the, the issues that we are creating by damned if you do, damned if you don't, the road to hell paved with good intentions, trying to get people some decent affordable places to live.
Okay, let's try to move this.
Okay, you do, we're there.
One, any problem with the six point five to six point nine? For number one.
When do we hear, there's comments on this subject matter, when do we hear?
We'll, we'll hear the comments at the end, yeah, 'cause we're still battling it out ourselves.
I just wonder if that would influence.
Oh, they'll get, they'll get hurt. Any problem with number one? I, let me also say this, and, 'cause I've questioned a lot, but the design, this design compared to the previous design is significantly better. Especially with the open space part of it, and the fact that there's a top lot in the square. So that square that's non-occupied there, it's got a big hole in the drawing, that's a top lot, right? That's what I got from the last meeting.
Right, yeah.
Right, a portion of it.
It'd be a top lot. I, I, I can appreciate this, and I don't know if this resonates on, on the same note, but, you know, my concern becomes, okay, we're increasing the number of people that are residing there. And prior, there was planned to be a, a road that would take people out from Merritt Mill to Philip Morris. For, for the, which, which would have alleviated a lot of the issues with Merritt Mill Road itself. And you come up to that bend and that light, and then even Old Ocean City, because as you're coming down, as you're heading east on Old Ocean City, it gets backed up at that intersection for people making left turns. Then you have the people that continue down Old Ocean City, you have the people making that turn down Merritt Mill. It's, you know, it's just a number of things that are just going to back everything up for the people that reside in that community. And then that doesn't even go to the impact that it's gonna have on Merritt Mill Townhomes, which is now vast majority renter, was intended to be an owner community. And, and then the people that purchased in the townhomes that are, I mean, in the condos, that own condos that are twice, their, their mortgage, they're, they're so upside down in their condos. And, and we're, we're doing all these things and a lot of questions about how it's going to impact. The people that live there now aren't being answered, and how we're gonna make sure that Salisbury is as full of places possible, they just aren't being answered. And we're, we're sort of hiding behind the banner affordable housing. And then where's the number, you know, to what extent do we need additional affordable housing in Salisbury? I'm not asking that in jest, I'm just saying, so we actually know.
Yeah, I think what we have is that conversation about finding out how many units we have done over the last couple of years. The other thing I remember asking about Chief Duncan going and having a look at this in terms of, um. Yep, well, there goes his age. It was not true that graduated.
Calls for service? Calls for service.
No, well, when calls for service, it was environmental law enforcement. If she was gonna take a look at, at what was the best, if there were problems behind the other development getting over to the grocery store, if there was traffic there and there were no lights and there was a safety issue, she was, she was, I thought she was gonna also take a look.
I don't remember that.
I do remember that.
I do remember the other, I do remember the other.
I can answer, so, to your question of how many, I have how many affordable housing units have received the capacity fee waiver? If that's pretty much what you're asking. And since it was passed in two thousand and five, we've waived five hundred and thirty. Not all of those were built, 'cause some of those were recent, like Farlow Fields where it did not get built, but we've, we've waived five hundred and thirty capacity fees for affordable housing.
And Farlow Fields, where was that supposed to be?
That's actually, uh, just down the street a little bit, off of Beagle Park Drive and Old Ocean City Road.
Okay.
What'd you say, we're on letter X though?
We're on one.
It's partly my fault, I will admit it.
Six point nine, it is your fault, and I will hold you accountable, but we'll, we'll keep going. So, six point nine, everybody okay with the six point nine units? All right, now let's get to the meat. So then you've got, um.
The different plan.
The different plan, which is that plan. And I think it's, there's no, there's no question, this one's much better than the other one.
Yeah, I think the plan is exemplary.
Based on, yeah, based on the first drawing. And then, now.
Could I ask a question, one question? Is there a problem with, and I know you've all discussed the waivers, how you wanted things, what, is there a problem with it just being a subsidy going out in that area?
How do you mean, be more specific with your question.
Yeah, I just said it. Is there a issue with subsidy going out in that, in that particular area?
I, I doubt, I don't know what the census tract says for that area, I don't know if that area is, is, because it is residential, it is commercial, it is.
We provide subsidy no matter where.
I, I'm just asking, I'm not saying general with us per se, I'm just saying in general, is the issue, is some of this issue, I know some of it is being the, the, the monies, the, the finances and the funds being distributed and. But my thing is, isn't just an issue with them, you know, the, the community not wanting, actually wanting this?
No, I think it's more, to be honest with you and I, one hundred and fifty dollars inside.
Oh, gosh.
This, this rent, what it's going to be with him is what it should be. I don't wanna go there because I know what, what the smackdown I'll get. His rent is exactly what rent should be in this town without all of this. And the tax credits ought to go for even less.
Less than.
That's, that, that's what really bothers me is that people here are section eight and low income, and what I hear is that's what the rent in Salisbury should be. What people are getting for rent in this town is obscene.
Well, the only way that happens is by increasing your inventory. Couldn't put pressure on the, my.
I wish with what's left to, to develop and what's left of, of the water and sewer plant, they're nowhere near done. They're just gonna keep building it and building it, and that's a whole nother discussion of what happens to our inner-city neighborhoods when this gets built. Let's go back to letter B.
Can I interrupt, totally off topic, Mr. President, I'm sorry, we're doing a soft open to the true.
I know why.
Street Community Center tonight, I gotta go to that, I hope you all come right after this. However, you're gonna discuss my favorite piece of legislation that this body has ever seen, I think the big, the biggest, of course, you know, come on, we're planning here.
Many questions on that.
The, the biggest step forward the city can take.
Yeah.
Is, uh, saying we are no longer gonna be a car-centric, uh, car auto-centric city.
We'll finish, we'll take care of this and then we'll.
Sorry, I'm gonna miss that.
No, that's fine.
Have a good night.
Okay. So now we're at the, the way, the one thirty four, and. Who's in favor of the one thirty four credit?
Oh, I am. It's, it's, that's what we, we got from the beginning.
Four.
I'm not in favor of it, but I'm in the minority. And, you know, I do wanna respond to your question, I don't, there is concern in the community about the impact that, that bringing affordable housing will have. You know, I've encouraged residents to go to Booth Street so that they can see that it is going to be a well-managed aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah.
Community.
Visit.
And, you know, my, the feedback I've gotten from community members when they look at the complex itself, they're like, that's nice. However, that doesn't change the fact that we're putting more and more people in this area of the city and there are no urban amenities for these individuals. There's no amenities for the people that live out here. You have individuals that did decide to invest in this city and, and. My hope is that we'll put them in as positive, everyone's at this table, is that we'll get them in as good a situation as possible. When we bring this in, we wanna make sure that it's well-planned, you know? Having, having young people that can go to the back of a shopping center, it's not necessarily Penrose's issue, but because we know it's going to happen, we have, we should try to stop it. You know, we should wanna put something in for these young people, we have the top lot, what about the teenagers, you know? There, there, there's a number of concerns that come with putting in a community that's gonna serve a lot of families. And, and the community in the, the condominiums, there aren't that many children, there's more children in the townhomes, and it's, it becomes problematic as is.
Okay. So, the, let's try again. Jim said he's okay with the one thirty four. I am, I'm okay with the one thirty four.
I'm okay.
April's okay with the one thirty four?
Undecided.
Undecided.
It, it kinda balances out with the other, the other money.
With the capacity piece?
So, you know, it's, uh.
And what's the capacity fee amount?
Two thirty six.
Two thirty six.
Seven eleven.
Is there a possibility to, to balance those out monetarily to make them, so it is, so it is even or more even?
Well, I, I think for me, the concern is. Having that balance of a connectivity issue and trying to solve some of those problems before we go and give away three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I think that's my, I mean, you know, I've paid attention long enough to Salisbury politics that I've seen a hundred of these, of these discussions. And, and like, like you, like you said, it, it's always a concern every time we, we have this discussion. And, you know, there, there's a point, at, at least for me, that, you know, we've gotta, you know, start asking for stuff and start.
Yeah, and the idea that the parking modifications are next on our problem, we're doing something, it's gonna do nothing but create a hundred cars per day. I think it's, it's, are we six in one, half a dozen in another, so we can say we're doing something?
Yeah, so, so the other part is, how do we alleviate that? How do we, you know, there's no bike lanes out there, there's no, there's no place for people to walk.
You wouldn't ride a bike, would you?
I mean, would you?
I wouldn't ride a bike.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, that's the.
I do ride. I do ride my bike to downtown Salisbury and whatever we can do to encourage people to get on bicycles.
I've lost control, but I'm gonna take it back.
Anyway, that's, that's where, that's kinda like where I am.
Let's go, let's go.
Let's do, let's, I'm gonna do this a little differently. Who can, can we agree on the lead program versus the, um. Who can, can we agree on the lead program versus the, um, getting rid of the lead program and going to NGBS?
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so we've got one, two, no, one, two A, uh, and almost B, but we're not there yet. We've, we have C and we have D, right? No problem with D, we need a manager out there. Okay, so we're down to, um, the waiver fee and/or capacity fee in my book. And.
Sidewalks.
See, doesn't the sidewalk sound a lot easier now?
You said you were born it, this might be all over by now.
So, um, I hear what you're saying, and I don't disagree with what you guys are saying. But in, I, I've got this thing in the back of my head hammered on my head, that this is it for a while.
Yeah.
This is it.
Yeah, for a while, is that a hundred years, ten?
This is it, who knows?
What, what did they end with what, I'm sorry?
This is the last project like this where we're gonna get state funding.
Yes.
Just to add to that, it is, it has become a lot more difficult to get the, the allocations of low housing tax credits. As you sort of were alluding to, it's, it's been focused, you know, the areas like Booth Street, it's nearly impossible to get the funding in those areas because of what the state, where the state is sort of directing resources.
Well, and it was all directed by lawsuit.
Yeah, lawsuits.
Right. And that's the part that, that's the part that I'm trying to, in my head, fight. Is it worth giving up this?
No.
For that?
For, for me, in my understanding, and maybe I need to do more reading on that, that situation that's happening across the bridge. But it seems that there's a number set on the number of housing units that have to be put up in that region, and once they reach that number, then we'll start looking elsewhere. This is a profitable endeavor, so, I mean, I, I, I just don't know.
But they have to reach that.
Yeah, they do, however.
And, and it takes years for them to reach that, so while they're reaching it, we're out of the loop.
This is, this is not an easy discussion for sure. Well, we're gonna have to eventually get to a position, so we've, we've narrowed it down to two, three.
Does anybody know how much the state credits are worth?
In this project, they, they translate into about, um, a little north of, oh, this, well, I should know off the top of my head, more than thirteen million dollars of, of private equity investment into the project.
So for lead people, you're getting a tax break on this thirteen million dollar investment because it's?
Well, we're, we're not, as a developer, we're not getting any tax breaks. What happens is these tax credits are, they're purchased by investors, this, you know, they'll, they'll pay ninety-three cents for a one-dollar tax credit, whatever, that gets syndicated and becomes a source of equity, it's, that, that's the whole situation.
But, you know, the issue is, they've gotta do it that way, raise the funds. Okay. Let me ask a blunt question, and I hope, don't, don't take this as anything other than me asking you the question. If we, uh, reduce the capacity fee waiver, would that kill the project? In your, in your opinion? I know you have other people that are, but it, would it, would it kill the, the deal?
Um, we're, I'm, you know, we're always gonna figure something out, I'll, I'll just be honest about that, we're, you know, we're, we're creative. And, um, the, the one thing I would say about the capacity fee waiver is it does, it ties to one of the sources of loan funds in the project, which is called the Partnership Rental Housing Program, and is only available for projects that partner with housing authorities. They look for, uh, they actually, I, I should say they require some type of local contribution. So the capacity fee waiver, which is already, you know, contemplated in the legislation, would, would allow us to get those, those loan funds.
And then the other one you said is tied into another, the one thirty-four contribution is tied in as well to a different?
Uh, no, no.
That's not?
No, I think I was just referring to the fact that it was in the annexation agreement originally.
Okay, so. The, the capacity fee one would put it in jeopardy, the contribution.
For workforce housing would not. Not many people would say to you, but I can hear my mother going, did you really keep those people from getting decent housing over a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars? I can hear her right now. Michelle, she hears is affordable housing, she isn't here that there's investors, she doesn't, you know, she doesn't.
All right, let me do this. Who could support the document as written, based on our discussion that we, our long discussion that we just had? Who could support passage, uh, if we got the twenty-one thousand in sidewalks?
I could, but I need to hear from the public first.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, could you?
Yeah, I could.
I'm just, then we'll, we'll take, we'll hear from the public and we'll, we'll repoll, okay? So as it is, because we're talking about two different things. We're talking about financing and, uh, structure as opposed to, uh, social issues that we, we need to resolve. Okay.
But they're intertwined.
Yeah, but if we cancel the project.
Yeah.
Then it's no, no, in other words, if we kill the project, then there's no reason to hear the following. Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay? So who could support this as it is right now with all of the conditions? April? You could. Jim?
Yes.
Say it again?
Yes, sorry.
And this is with sidewalks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, we're gonna poll again after, if we have, we already have consensus to move it forward.
Uh-huh, yeah.
But, uh.
I'm not there yet.
Okay, so right now it's four one. Okay, so, let's do this. And I know this is, you know, this deserves discussion, so I, please.
That's the process, I appreciate that.
This is nothing personal.
Yep, of course.
And I've still learned all about NGSB instead of leads, so I've gained something out of it. Um, I would like to ask the public now to come up and make some comments. I would ask you to do this. Please limit your comments, and I have a timer, four minutes. Uh, if you're going to make the same point as the person who goes before you, just say, I concur and I agree. If you're gonna add something to the discussion, we're more than happy to hear that, okay? So, uh, as I got the order, I got these in, uh, Joe De Silvestri, come on up and go to the podium, please state your name and address and make your comments.
Hi, everyone, Joe De Silvestri, Merritt Mill, two thousand and three Merritt Mill. I had a, I had a couple of topics, but I'm listening. And I hear things that this is good for Salisbury, I hear that a couple extra units bring more money in, in consideration for low cost and people that need housing. But how about the community of owners that on our backs that you financially have crushed? And I'll use us as an example, we're original owners, we paid two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, our unit's going for a hundred and fifteen now. So I look at it that concessions are made for everybody else, but you never consider the owners of Merritt Mill condos. And, and as far as the property line goes, if, you guys don't even know who owns the property behind the annexed property, there's an open field, does the shopping center own it? Who owns that land? There's a track of woods, it's physically impossible to make a thoroughfare to that shopping center that doesn't come onto our land. They come through and there's no way to do it. Maybe y'all need, all of you, to go out there and look at it, really know what's there. Actually know before you just dump things. And I, I hate to be like this, but it just seems like you're doing something sight unseen. The old saying of ready, shoot, aim. Before, you're doing something before you even really know the lay of the land, and traffic will never go through. It's a bottleneck, it, it's, it's really impossible, I see no way, kids are already walking in the street, there are no sidewalks. And basically, all the owners at Merritt Mill, especially the original ones, we're crushed financially, we're hurt. Where's concessions for us? Where is money for us to help us? We're so upside down in our unit, we don't know what to do. We are absolutely, people are actually thinking about short selling these things, getting out. But I hear all this for people for low housing, this is gonna be a beautiful Disneyland, what about Merritt Mill? It's all on our backs. And that's basically what I got to say, we're in bad shape out there right now, but there's never a consideration in these talks. Not one. Pretty much sums it up, thank you.
Thank you. And I think some of us have been out there, I've been out there twice. I don't know who's land, who has land. I'm, I'm just, I'm just answering a question that you asked. Okay, next up is, uh, Richard Plon.
Again, we're, I'm not one of the original owners, the person that I bought my property from had to pay the bank eleven thousand dollars be, so he could sell it. What we're trying to do, uh, is maintain at least our property values. Um, the, the design, I think, is terrific, much better than the previous design that I saw here at the planning board meeting. I'm still concerned about the density, though, that's being placed, you know, right next to us and the number of children that are gonna be there. I walk that whole block five days a week, I walk the perimeter of that block, and the only sidewalk down Merritt Mill Road, Philip Morris Route fifty, in front of Health South, there are no sidewalks there, the only sidewalk is, is Merritt Mills. And will be whatever they put in for, for sidewalks. Uh, it's, it's just an issue. What I, what I'm also concerned about is if the density for that property is based on six point five units per, per acre, uh, I would like to see the back half permanently left wild. And I, I, I would hate to see that sold off and someone then come in and develop that back half.
That can't, that can't happen, that will never, that will never happen.
But at the planning board meeting, it was not gonna be in perpetu- uh, perpetual.
Perpetuity?
Perpetuity given, given to the, the conservative, isn't there a conservative organization that's in the state of Maryland? That this property would go to?
Just, so we talked about a forest conservation easement, I actually, I don't know what the, I, I assumed that that would be, um, in perpetuity. We're, we're also, and this is not confirmed, but we're gonna try to pursue doing a land conservation easement, which as far as I understand, would actually would be in perpetuity. But, you know, and we were talking about it in the hallway after the planning commission meeting, there's a way that we could have configured the site plan to leave open the oppor- opportunity for development of that, we had no interest in doing that, understanding that, that, you know, the annexation agreement called for seventy-two units, we, we are not trying to exceed that except for the, you know, minor, the three units. Um, we have, we have no interest or intention in, in developing that, um, on the back half of the site.
Yeah, well, we appreciate that, and I would think, I would like to see it keep that way. The other thing that, that concerns me that I thought about during the planning board meeting was that we have four ponds that are on our property, and we're now gonna put possibly a hundred or a hundred and twenty kids could be in that development next to us. We have a, we have a, I think what's, uh, is a liability, uh, if those kids are coming over onto our area with those ponds. Now, we could fence them, I mean, that's an option that we have, is completely fence our ponds, and I've seen some ponds that have been fenced in the, in the neighborhood. That's, that again be, becomes an expense for us. What, what we'd like to see possibly is some kind of fencing between the townhouses and, and this new property so that, so that kids don't come over into the, into the pond areas. Kids, kids will die in six inches of water, kids will drown in six inches of water, we have much more than that.
Well, could I say something to you, sir? Riverside Apartments, they're basically subsidized. And there's a, a river flowing through, and we've not had a casualty yet with any of those kids, so if the parents are watching their children, I don't think that would happen. And, but I understand your safety net that you don't want it to happen, 'cause I'm the same way about water. I'm very thorough when it comes to water, so, you know, I'm, I, I kind of agree with you on that. Um, but I don't think they would by chance come over and get in the park, I don't, I really don't. It would be one out of a million.
Now, I saw, I saw, uh, an agenda for this, uh, this meeting today, and I thought in the agenda there was a change in, in parking zoning, in the zoning ordinance for parking.
That's coming up afterwards.
It's not really.
I, I, if I can speak on that while I'm here, I would not change that. Uh, where I come from, uh, I practice architecture in the state of New York. Uh, one, one dwelling unit gets two parking spaces. You know, it's a, a three-bedroom unit will, will get at least three parking spaces, and then you've got to accommodate addition, uh, you know, visitors. This particular project probably will not have that much in the way of parking, because if I'm earning eleven thousand dollars a year, I probably can't afford a car. So there probably won't be that many cars there. That's another issue that, that I, that I was thinking of, when, when I see the agreement, it's, it's the Salisbury area income. Is it the metropolitan area or is it the city of Salisbury? Is it, there's a difference between the two?
I don't, no, there is no difference, because the Salisbury metropolitan area is all of Wycomico County, all of Sussex County, all of, that's our metropolitan area is, is almost all of the lower shore.
So the, so that the median income there is different than it is inside the city limits? So when we're talking about.
No, I think that the, the application of the, of the algebraic equation is based on all of that, and believing that the, the arguments with us as to how you determine how all of Sussex County became a part of the Salisbury metropolitan is again out of so much of this, everybody whoever wants to do one of these jobs, you get here saying, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that, and then you get here and immediately you're told that you're not gonna do this, you're not gonna change that, you're not gonna do that. But no, it's all based on that, that algebraic equation from the whole of our shore and parts of Delaware.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
And, uh, sometimes that helps us, sometimes that hurts us, it's a, it's a give it then take it away.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Virginia Bender. Okay, and last is, uh, Emile Perella.
Yes, yes, sir. My name's Emile Perella, I live in Merritt Mill condominiums as well. Um, I would like to say I agree with Mr. Jody that for the one hour that I've been here, I've been hearing, um, do this, do that for the good of Salisbury, um, for, for, um, for affordable housing. There's no issue with the good of Salisbury, there's no issue for doing what's good for, um, um, for people who have less means. Um, but what I did not hear about is we were not considered the private property homeowners that is just adjacent to the new development, I didn't hear anything about that. Next, um, I also agree with Mr. Rick. Um, I am concerned about increasing the, uh, density of people living in that area, and right now I'm not hearing about any, um, plans, or I did hear Rick say something about a possible street that will offset that increased density to Merritt Mill. Um, I also agree with protecting that behind this is woods. I agree with Mr. Rich, I would want that to just be woods and protected and conserved instead of having, um, possible, the possibility of having further development happen there. I also agree with Mr. Rick with having a fence between Penrose and the townhomes. For me, it's not just a, a topic of safety for the kids going into the pond. For me, it's also a topic of just having a little more security. Why? Because at present, there's, there's no fences. And at present, we have people from across the street, crossing the street, crossing Merritt Mill, walking through the townhomes, through the, through our lawns to go to the, to Food Lion, to go to that center in the back. So has there been issues? I've heard that, well, from experience, there has been graffiti in one of our walls just in two thousand seventeen April. Before I resided there, there has been, I've been told by one of the homeowners that a robbery happened in the center and they passed through our area to escape. So yes, there is an issue with security. Now, please humor a simpleton. Right now, what, what is, is it, is the zone in our area residential? So that, along Merritt Mill, that's residential? Okay. B, so in two thousand and seven, when our buildings and townhomes were developed, it's still residential? Correct? Okay. So now, so this Penrose development, it's still residential? It's an affordable housing development? Who chose that area for, for Penrose to develop? For affordable care? How, how, how did you choose that area for affordable housing? I'm sorry.
Let me do it this way. There's a piece of property sitting out there. And because it's in the metropolitan, in, in Salisbury's urban growth area, this is where Salisbury doesn't wanna grow. Doesn't wanna, we don't wanna put seventy-five, develop seventy-five people out in Willards or Pittsville because they don't have water and sewer. And in order to make sure that there is less... Somebody find a good way for me to say this.
Less cost?
Yes. The state said in order to make sure that there's not all of this, this septic system going into, into the water and into the back, they said, let's make it, if you can get on water and sewer, you can build more units in that area. When your units were built, somebody out in that neighborhood said, by God, why are we putting people out here who have a six-point something when there's, you know, a house every, every couple of acres? But because there was water and sewer out there.
City water and sewer?
City water and sewer, you were able to cluster, let's cluster that development and put more people there.
Okay.
Now, this, now, what these, what these guys are looking at is that says, okay, well, if you look at Salisbury's median income, we're not going to be able to build market rate. They'd never afford to build seventy-five market rate apartments out there. Or their business model says, if some investor's going to give me a credit, and the state's gonna give me a credit, it makes more sense to build affordable housing. Now, you heard me earlier, I think what the rent is there is what the rent should be in Salisbury. So I have, I have a conflicting view as to what goes out there. But because it's inside the city limits and it's on water and sewer, and the state wants the density to be higher, it's a perfect place for it. But the state doesn't look at it from seventy-five thousand feet and go, there are farmhouses right around the corner. What, what the people in business do is they look at that area and say, if it's on water and sewer, and I can build this many, and I can get the tax credits from both the city and the state, then this is a venture that makes us money, because we wouldn't make money otherwise.
So it's...
Because if you took that piece of land and sent it to developer, let's do it on, let's keep it in the county, because that's where it all originally was, you're only gonna build six or eight houses on that entire piece. Because you have to have all of this space in order for your septic systems to be able to flush, especially when you're on the east side where you are, which is much harder to do. So that's the situation that we found ourselves in. And then when the boom came, and this is where I apologize to all of you, I'm underwater exactly the same way you are. And I built just down, Jack is just down the street, I'm down the street. It's because all these property values went up because it was build, 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 build. And now the only way to develop that property is to be able to do it with tax credits through the state. I took two and a half of her.
You have two minutes left. He took two.
And that's, and that's simply put, that is the situation that you're in. It's very difficult for me to not be able to support it, because I'm the one who sat there with the big map and drew a circle around Salisbury and said, we will go no further than right here. And literally, you're right on the line. We will go no further than right there. But if that water and that sewer is going to that, to that shopping center, and it's going to those places that are out at Kmart, because that's where the water, it was built out there so that development could happen. Eventually, what will happen is that all of those little houses and all of those fields along Beagle and Park Drive will all be developed. Our concern at the table, all of us, is that we balance the need for affordable places for people to live, your safety and the concerns that you brought us last time, and the infrastructure issues that are now telling us, it's really great that everybody got these tax credits, but what are we supposed to do with the people who are underwater? And what are we supposed to do when you're eighteen cars back trying to get out of Food Lion? That is the hardest thing in the world. And the difficulty is, is that A, if we say no, someone's gonna say, you don't like people who need affordable housing. That's the first thing that's gonna come out of this.
That's not the issue.
That's not the issue. The second thing is that somebody is going to be sitting out there and there's going to be an accident at the corner of Tillman and, and Merritt Mill. And somebody's gonna say, because this is what my mother says, why don't those idiots do something about this? And I'm always sitting in the car where they're going, I think.
I am one of those.
I think. My dad will go, Patsy, you know you're talking about Jimmy, he's sitting in the backseat. That's, you know, that's what you deal with. The extraction, and then of course, I'm a school teacher and, and I teach along that road. You put seventy-five kids in there, what have I just done? He solves very soon.
So there's no better place for an affordable housing, for affordable housing? Is that it? Because right now, so we have the condos. If you go further left, you have the apartments. I don't think that's affordable housing, though, right? Okay. If you go over there, going to the Walmart, passing through the back street, there are detached homes that, that are, I don't think they're affordable housing as well. So...
Uh, you, uh, villages at Parsons Lake, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, right. Okay. So, so you put the affordable housing projects beside us? And then of course, well, not of course, but there is a tendency for the prices to plummet for those beside it, for the property values for those beside it. So I'm thinking, so why there when you can't provide good traffic, a better traffic scheme? When, right now, I'm thinking from experience, the townhouses that we have, I think we have twenty to twenty-five, we have six trash bins, and it's not enough for this multifamily townhomes. We're adding seventy-five, seventy-two, seventy-five homes, multifamily homes. I, I, please make sure that you have enough trash bins, that they won't be flown away to our area or to our ponds. Please. So those things, it's, 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 for me, it's not a question of, am I against affordable housing? No, I'm not against affordable housing. My question is, is this the right place for that to happen? Because it's a, there you go. Just consider us, we're already living there. I still have a lot.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is anyone here the condo association president? Or can, can you get us that information?
Uh, the president of the condo?
Yep, if, if you're interested in more trashcans, we can work with you for that.
No, no, we're private. The townhomes, the townhomes.
Okay, we don't do that, oh, okay.
Don't, don't, please don't put any more trashcans. I mean, they need them, they need them. We've had this conversation on like your second day.
Who knows, private?
Huh?
It's not city?
They're on city. They have the black trashcans. The back has private service. Their service is sufficient. The front end has city and it's insufficient. And that's a separate matter. But I got a call from Salisbury Commons regarding their inadequate trash even today, so.
Okay. I think that what we'll do is, we have to keep thinking on the other, the other pieces of this, of this puzzle. You need to get back to us at the next work session. And then hopefully we can wrap it up and then still meet the hearing, the public hearing things.
Come back at the next work session.
Next work session, yeah. Because we're not ready, we're not ready to move it right now.
So for you all's purpose, that means we're bumped off of next meeting, next Monday's meeting? We won't be discussing this?
Correct, we will not.
So you don't need to be here next week?
No, the week after.
And I expect them when I can.
You're more than welcome to come next week.
Yeah, please come, we, we like visitors.
Yeah, this is the most excitement we've had since probably the last time we were here. Can I ask a legal, a legal question? Hey, you know what, you, what you just allowed me to do is to read read why I got involved in all of this together. So I really do thank you. Let me ask Mr. Tillman a question. If we were to deny it because it's an application from the developer for low income, is that something that the state's gonna say, we cannot deny?
Well, I mean, you, you already have an agreement with them for what was to be there to begin with. You can, I, you certainly are legally entitled to deny any of the requested modifications.
Well, you know, I, I'd like to believe that, Mr. Tillman, I would, but that's not lawyers in the state work.
No, I know, the state always has the option. If they think, think someone is, you know, violating the fair housing or violating discriminatory laws.
And that is my question.
That's the state's option, but that, I have no, I certainly don't see any evidence here tonight of anybody attempting to do that. So my answer would be, I don't think they would succeed.
I think our, I think our overall opinion is there's certain things that we want for the betterment of the community as a whole.
If the roads and if the sidewalks and if the infrastructure were there.
Infrastructure is a big problem. I mean, that's the way that that's been hodgepodged together with that, with that road. It's horrible.
And to be perfectly honest with you, if somehow the way to get onto Old Ocean City Road from Merritt Mill didn't have the hook, that still would make it impo... To me, if, if you wanna settle some of the problem, you'd only be able to get onto Merritt Mill from Old Ocean City. You wouldn't be able to get...
Make it one-way?
You'd have to, because that says you're going to go on the highway to go to Willards, which is what you should be doing, which I'm not. I'm gonna tell you straight up, I'm not. If, if... But what you'll get is backlash from commercial entities that say, I want everyone to have as much access to my commercial. And then, then you, then you're not good for business.
When you say that, are you talking about the shopping center?
Just, you know, I mean, if you were, if you were...
Shopping centers to county, isn't it?
No, that shopping center's us.
Is the shopping center us?
Isn't the shopping center us?
That part of that Old Ocean City Road is county, but what do we, what if we look at a long, I mean, we need to have a discussion. Is a long-term solution to the traffic situation there?
And that's, exactly.
That is...
And what are the other properties that are sitting out there? Because if this one goes, let's just say it does, then it'll be the farmer or the homeowner that owns the three acres next to it that says, well, if I annex into the city, you know how many units I can develop on this and how much, how much, oh, how much more worth? Ooh, my mom just turned over in front of the television. How much more my property is worth now that I have water and sewer and I have these density numbers of stuff that I can fit in? So might be a good idea to, again, look at the map. From the bigger section, across the street is a house that has the antique. The antique shop in the back, Coca-Cola, isn't that? Because you're back inside the city limits when you get over to the, the doctor's offices and the restaurant.
So I guess is all of Tillman Road, is that city? Is it all a city road? Or is it piece of it county?
Once you get, it's not, the state owns, is the DMV, so that's not us. Back behind them is not, that doesn't have, that's not true. There is a little, there's a little set of, is that retirement?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, is Gate, East Gate?
I know there's signs there that say, city, city maintenance ends here on Tillman.
We'll have that for the next work session.
What's the worst time? Is the morning the worst, or is it the...
You know, if you stop into Food Lion, if I can go from Willards at three, I can get there by three twenty-six.
So it's the same as Mill Street time?
It's, it's, it is just, and that's a really great food line. It's a very clean food line. It is, it, it has a really great selection and, and everybody's trying to get in there. It's amazing because the rest of the shopping center isn't full. Actually, I think what we ought to do is try and pave the parking lot in Food Lion is what I'd really like us to do.
There's a couple of rough spots in there.
Rough spots in it. Getting in and out of that McDonald's and that Dunkin' Donuts. Again, I say to you, whoever...
Food line, who'd be doing these rules?
Not planned it, whoever approved that.
That's a busy food line.
Whoever approved that, if you decide to get in there and get coffee in the morning, you'd rather be there before about six fifty, are you done? So, yeah.
So, so this is Penrose. This is the townhomes Merritt Mill. This is the condominium Merritt Mill. So just correct me, this is something that, well, this property, we don't know who owns it.
No, that's theirs, that's their property.
That's your property? Ah, okay, so this is what we're talking about, the back half, if we can just make it protected and conserve.
Exactly.
Is there any, so is this, no, so whose property is this then? Is, is it possible, just, just thinking out of the box, just thinking, is it possible to have a road there so that, so that it offsets? We, this area over here doesn't have to go over to Merritt Mill if they want to go somewhere else?
There's about three homes.
Yeah, go right.
Right there.
So one thing that our plan does include, it's not shown clearly here, and was part of the, the annexation agreement, was to provide for a future connection if there was development here. So we're gonna have an easement that then allows for, you know, if there's a development here, they would be able to come in, would be mapped out, they could build a curb.
To go where?
So if, I'm just saying, if there was development. Right now, it's hearsay. Yeah, that's just hearsay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
All right. Okay, we're, we're way off things now. So let's try to get back to control. We took, we, we hear the comments. Amanda's got a list of things that she's going to do and for the next, we'll come back and revisit this at the next work session. Okay? And we thank you for coming in with your suggestions. We will take them in consideration as we always do. And then we'll try, you have a list, you have some stuff you need to go back and discuss and come back with some answers as well. And then we'll, we'll do this again in two weeks. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to parking code modifications.
I was gonna say, you still have us.
Still got you.
Great, so this is a, a very significant proposed change to the parking requirements. And Anne can speak to it more than I, I can, but I'll give you the brief overview. There, there's been a, a movement nationally to look at efforts to encourage pedestrian and bicycle transportation over purely just vehicular transportation and instituting maximum required parking instead of minimum required parking. So of course, our, our parking code says this is the minimum that you have to have for different uses. So the proposed change would set maximums, say, we expect you to have, you know, up to this amount of parking. We, we also will encourage other types of transportation. The code changes includes adding required bicycle parking for projects. So this change is not dissimilar to what we have downtown in the Downtown Development District right now. That, that is part of the current code, is that parking in this area is market-driven. You, you have municipal parking lots and people who develop in the Downtown Development District have the ability to provide parking up to a level that they think is necessary, but they also utilize the municipal parking lots. So really, the, the market drives the necessity for how much parking there is. No, no one wants to build a new restaurant and have no parking spaces. That doesn't work for anyone's business model, so... So, there's still going to be a reasonable level of parking and this gives the, the developer more flexibility. Uh, if they develop something similar, they can use that as a guideline and, and they'll be able to come in and talk to us about how much parking they provide. So I, I wanna just give a couple examples, it's a, it's a long ordinance that's attached and we went through, um, each specific type. But just a, a couple to give you an idea, offices have typically been one space per two hundred square feet of office. The proposed would be, um, up to a maximum of one space per four hundred square feet of office space. Apartments have been one and a half spaces per unit plus twenty percent for guests. The proposed would be one and a half spaces per unit. So this, this is a very significant change. We did provide, um, some examples. I, I hope you got to maybe look at some of the examples, um, it's, it's been a, an initiative for, for smart towns throughout the country. Um, this is coming to you before planning commission, this is coming to you first to get your feedback and comments. Before we take it to that level. This obviously would have to go through planning commission, it's a change to the zoning code. But we really wanted to introduce it and get your feedback first.
The other, I think, I can add to that, I mean, a lot of research went into not just case studies from around. The country that are listed in these articles, but also, um, a pretty in-depth review of parking standards. Of similar towns of similar size on the shore and some of the newer adopted codes. Um, so there was a lot of analysis, if you will, on that. And one of the, um, one of the, I think, important aspects is that while we are turning our minimums into maximums. We're also allowing for some performance standards if in fact a deva- a, a business. Or a developer comes in and wants to go beyond those maximums, that there's an ability for the city to get.
To appeal to the planning commission.
Right, and they can also, the planning commission can require, um, previous pavers. Additional landscaping that are designed, so those are some, some of the give and takes of the, of the code. Um, and I, I, you know, I think it's, it is a, it's a moving trend. One, I know we've had a couple of projects, one in particular, I'm not gonna say the address, but it's a redevelopment project. And we wanna see redevelopment, we're excited about redevelopment. But, uh, you know, good redevelopment and, um, there's a vast parking lot in the rear. Of the building and then there's proposed additional parking in the front. And, um, in meeting with the developer. We requested that they might consider removing some of the parking in the rear. To put in some trees or maybe some bio retention or just to soften the sea of asphalt. And, um, they, we had no, no teeth to make that happen, it was just a require, it was just a request. But when we started looking at what the required parking was currently. They were really below what was required. And so the, you know, our original thought was, oh, we had this great idea, well, if we're gonna give them this parking in the front. Then surely in the rear, we can get them to remove some of this asphalt and do some, some green infrastructure.
And in the end, we actually needed to give them more.
And then, and almost, yes, so that kinda was sort of the catalyst that started us to really look at. What the requirements were and are. And, and, you know, I think typically in the past malls, big boxes. You know, they, they really do plan their parking for Black Friday and, and. And that Black Friday is one day and, and what we end up with are these vast amounts of, of asphalt. Um, and it, and it's different in different places, you know, Amanda and I have had this discussion. You know, I live in Cambridge and Walmart's parking lot is almost always full because it's the only gig in town. So you have to.
It's a small for a Walmart parking lot.
It is, and, but I will give them credit, when they came in to redevelop, they did a lot of green infrastructure without us even asking. So, they were great to work with, but, but what I'm saying is that.
This is my Walmart, that's the Walmart I always bring up.
I know, I, I knew. Which one are we, are we, I remember the, the question was, are we getting A or B? Right?
Yeah, yeah, and it is always that.
And, and it is, you would, this code, I, I believe as it's proposed. Allows staff and the planning commission to look at these on a case-by-case basis. Because it's not a one-size-fits-all and not every Walmart needs to plan for Black Friday. But some of them do, so I guess that's to wrap, you know, there, it is a big change. Um, I believe it's for the better and I believe it's been a priority of the mayor, so.
I've got a couple of questions, um. We did receive some comments from the bicy- bicycle pedestrians. Have they been included in?
We just received them, I think, yesterday.
Okay.
But I can tell you that, um, they have been part of the discussions on adding. The bicycle language from the very beginning, so they're all aware of it and they've been pointed to. That was actually modeled after, um, the Cambridge code, which was just recently adopted. Sorry, I mean, that other place up the road, across the river, um, over the bridge.
No, actually, what we're saying is that we like what they, what you did up there. Oh, no, I'm not kidding with you.
What, what'd you say?
The, the other thing, my, my whole opinion of this has changed in the last two weeks. I'll be honest with you, when, when they told me about the spin, the first time I heard about the spin program, I'm going, okay. You can tell who's doing what, all you gotta do is come downtown because there are bicycles everywhere. Parked, which means somebody brought them there. I don't know what they, I don't know how they got home, but that's the whole concept, you know, and, and. But that brings up more que- a lot of questions. For instance, I noticed in there and I read where, um, for instance, a, a food establishment, restaurant. Uh, should have X number of bike, how do you, with a, with a, you know, and it spelt it out pretty, pretty well in there. What happens if they have outdoor, like we're talking about, it's downtown, what Main Street's gonna look like? If they have outside seating and eating, how do they work? They put it in front of the store next door?
I think.
Those, those kinds of things concern me.
And, and still downtown is sort of unique in itself because there are shared municipal facilities and there still will be. Be- because you're right, i- if you think of some of the restaurants on Main Street, they don't physically have that space. You know, they don't have the parking lot space, but they are part of the special parking district. So, uh, that wouldn't change, that parking district would still be there.
And I think if the.
And so they wouldn't be bound by this, by this?
That's an overlay district that takes, um, priority. Takes precedent.
Gotcha, so that's the except, that's an exception.
That is an exception.
So the exception came before the.
Right.
So, in piggybacking on Mr. Keith, this is only going to apply to new. Correct.
That's correct, everyone else's grandfather, yes.
Question is, is where are you building something that you want people to ride the bike to? Because, uh, you know, we had these discussions about crosswalks and bike lanes up north and I was like, you'd be crazy to put that mess up there. You, it, it, first off, first off, and this is going to just cause so much, I don't think we have enough use. So the question is, is it chicken or the egg? Do you build a lane or do you have the bikers? Now, nobody's asked anybody to put a little traffic control thing at, you know, on Waverly to see how many bikes. Because the original bike lane is from City Hall to the campus of the university.
Yes.
I agree in theory with all of this, but I'm not sure whether or not it's applicable to here. And that's why I really.
When you say here, what do you mean here?
To Salisbury, because, because I don't know if it's chicken or the egg. I don't know, first off, whether or not, I want people riding their bikes, meaning you, mister. All the way downtown from out there on roads that are not equipped, are not wide enough. I, I, I just, I'm trying to figure out with changing it so that we, we're not a driving community. Where can you possibly save that when you look at what's left to develop inside the city if that's where these new regulations are going to go? And I don't know whether or not I'm wrong or right, I just, I look at this and I go, yes, less cars. And then I go, but wait a second, I don't want Hardy on that bike going down Beagle and Park Drive. Or coming down Old Ocean City Road towards, because again, even in that part of the city. Not just an older section where one, one street's this wide and then three blocks down, it's this wide. And then three blocks down, it's this wide again. So, I'm willing to support it in its entirety if somebody can tell me, A, if we have enough bicycles. Bicycle use, because if the bicycles that we're seeing out here and Mayor's touted it, you've touted it, I've touted it. But they're really being used.
In the city?
Eh, well, in, in, in this.
It's between the university and here.
In, yeah, in, in that particular, particular geographic area where, even though we have a lot of this with the roads, we are finding some success. But I'd like to know exactly how many bikes we think are actually out there for one. And B. In changing these, if you're riding down the road and you're in downtown and that's a special district. And then you go out of that special district, is the stuff that's in that district, has, has that changed to this new? Or is it only for the new stuff that's built further out along in the areas that we haven't developed? That's, that's what I'm worried about.
It's really anything new, so even redevelopment, so like the example Anne was bringing up. If there's an existing building that's now getting redeveloped and it's coming back through the site plan and planning commission, this would apply.
Because that was my question when we adopted the whole Route thirteen corridor thing. I kept going, I agree with this, this looks great, but unless something is either torn down and redeveloped, it stays exactly the same.
That's always a challenge.
And, and, and I say, because you know, I remember the newspaper reported Salisbury to adopt sixty-seven zillion dollar, no. If you listen, this is not gonna happen unless, and then my concern is that if I do tear down that building. Let's just say it's the old, it's the old thrift travel inn and we had already done these, these changes. Whether it be bike, whether it be parking, whether it be, how do you incorporate that? And what does that look like? Does it look just like Merritt Mill?
My answer, my answer to that, look at Carmex up on the north side. Look at the difference between Carmex, the way it is now, and the way it was when it was whatever it was. There's a burn, there's a.
Oh, 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 you're talking about when it was Chef Redd's? Oh, I thought you were talking about an old Carmax.
No, but I'm saying, look, compare that, compare that to the rest of the auto.
We're all gonna get in trouble, I said bikes and you said, oh, you should gabble, let's do a close if we should get out.
No, but the, the point is, if you look at, there, there's one, it's a prime example of exactly what we talked about. It's not, when you look at it now, it's attractive, which is really strange to say.
Isn't that odd, and that's not inside the limits?
No.
And they did it.
And they did it.
And they did it themselves, but they were made to do it. See, that's another difficulty I think we have here. Is that it seems to me the investors, some of the investors that we do have are not, are, are taking the path of least resistance. The path of least cost, no matter what, now Carmex is a large chain and I'm sure they have the money.
Well, they, on some of the stuff, if you saw, and, and I drove by it every day when they were doing construction, I mean. They raised the level of, of that because they were bringing in trucks and trucks of dirt. Because we all know the flooding issues there at that property and so.
They have that beautiful swell in the front with the rocks and.
Yeah.
But it's nice, I mean, it's kinda like, th- this is what good looks like.
Yeah, you're gonna take that picture, take a picture of that Walmart in Cambridge and say, this is what good looks like here.
All right.
Is this one of those things just like the, the change of Route thirteen that we, we agree to? And literally, it's going to have very small, small star here or there until all those things are connected.
That's correct.
And until we can keep going with bike lanes and, and connecting.
But I don't, and, and I love him and, and I'm glad he's at the Tru Street thing and I'm gonna have a conversation with him about why we need a community center. And building on the outside of the city and what's left, I'll do that later. But what I don't want is that, is like we had with, I think it needs to be clear to the citizens. Salisbury didn't adopt something that's gonna cost six hundred and seventy million dollars when it, when it adopted those changes for the quarter. We adopted the changes for this quarter, so in twenty-five, thirty and fifty years, it looks a little bit better than it is today.
And you have to start.
This is the same thing.
It is, it is the same thing. The, the other thing I wanted to just comment on, when you're talking about the, the roads. I agree with it, if it was like New York City where they have dedicated closed-off bike lanes, that's a different animal. But when you have sharrows, it, what it does, did I use that correctly?
Yes.
Good about that, scary, that's what I get for going to a meeting. But then it's, it's up to the individual riders to, to choose where, and, and, and also the impact. You gotta go to a, a BPAC meeting, seriously, because.
No, I've only enough ram in my head. I'll give you an example, when you drive into, into, um, uh, Washington DC now. And what the quarter used to be like. Again, I have, it looks like gentrification to me from what I saw before. And it scares the bejesus out of me where those bike lanes are parked right up against. But apparently, and, and, and this is true in every one of them, is that, is that there's a. Be good to the bikes and then we find out the bikes aren't always, always the best.
Oh, no, we've had discussion about that.
Your followers of the law, but, but apparently it does something to, to the area that makes it. That ma- that, that does some stuff with the bike, so, is this just something we need to, is it one big plan?
Yeah, it's the, it's the same as the, it's essentially identical to what we've done with the thirteen corridor.
And this is just, right, and it's to get your feedback to see if you would like us to advance it to planning commission and get, and get their approval on it.
I think it's worth taking to, personally, I think it's worth taking to the planning commission.
I do too.
Me too.
Is there anything else I hope? Anything for the good of the order? Okay, in that case, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.